Let's call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is the Board of Commissioners' public meeting, Tuesday, October 8th, 2019, a little after 10 o'clock. We're going to move right into consent agenda. And Melanie, why don't you go ahead and read that off?
Approval of payroll, September 6th, September 20th, and October 4th, 2019. Approval of minutes, September 3rd, 2019. Approval of claims, September 5th, September 12th, September 18th, September 25th, and October 3rd, 2019. Treasurer's monthly report filed, August 31st, 2019.
Okay, we'll move over to the Memorial Opera House with the artistic services agreement. We have Frank Allen, John Paluso, Jared Coller, Don Parker, Allison Grenat. And the venue rental agreements go to South Shore Orchestra, nonprofit, and Brightside Music LLC. And I'll open that up to the floor for the consent agenda for the commissioners to move on. Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. We're going to move into the announcements part of our meeting. First up, we would like to introduce our new 911 director, Anthony, Tony Stula. And Tony, why don't you come forward and give us a little bit about what you've got going on here and what you've had going on for the last several weeks? And welcome.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You bet.
So, what I'd like to introduce is the fact that, one, I'm very appreciative and proud to be a part of Porter County as well as the 911 Center and help us make some strides towards the future. Today, we have just migrated our, all of our law enforcement agencies to the new 700 megahertz radio system. It's going to provide better coverage, better interoperability for the county as well. We did that first thing this morning before coming in, and everything went along smoothly. We've been working on some hiring. We've just hired another seven individuals to put through training, to put us in a better place, provide better services to both the first responders and make sure the residents are taken care of and as safe as possible with 911. I'd also like to add that one thing I'm very proud to be here for is that the 911 Center has been performing above industry standards in call answering. In our industry right now, it should be 90% of your calls are answered within 10%, sorry, within, 90% of your calls are answered within 10 seconds, and 95% of your calls are answered within 20 seconds. I'm very pleased to say that for this year alone, we are at 99.41% of our calls are answered within 10 seconds, and 99.90% of our calls are answered within 20 seconds. The discrepancy in this is during our testing phase for the new phone system, CallWorks, there were periods that they had to let the calls go beyond the 20 seconds, so there's a discrepancy. Last year alone, for 2018, we did answer all of our calls within 20 seconds, 100%. So, we're above the industry standard right now for our nation, so I'm very grateful for the dispatchers and what they're doing, and they're doing a great job in there. Luckily, today, we will have the benefit to recognize two of our individuals from the Center. As you see, the first person we're recognizing is going to be Sue Baher. She has been working for the county for the past 28 years. 26 of those have been with the 911 Center. She is currently our quality assurance manager. We hate to lose her. We wish her the best in where she's going and her next step in life. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to have her come up and at least say a few words before she leaves.
Absolutely.
Sue? Can I grab something real quick? Our industry is one that sometimes people burn out in a short period of time. And although I have not had a great amount of time to know you, what you have done for this county as well as our center is remarkable, and I thank you for the time you've put in. We'd like to recognize you for what you've done, and if you need anything from us, please don't hesitate to ask. I know, on behalf of the Commissioner as well, everything you've provided for Porter County 911, Porter County Center Communications, we truly appreciate what you've provided for us.
Thank you.
Let's get a photo of you over here.
Thank you very much.
And I can't say enough, with the people such as Sue that have allowed us to train wonderful dispatchers, and we get the chance to recognize Chelsea Waffen, who is a relatively new dispatcher. She used our priority protocol for emergency medical dispatch to perform childbirth over the phone. So, she helped a father deliver his second child before the paramedics would arrive, and she literally did a textbook delivery of these directions and protocols to the father on the other line and was very compassionate, caring, listened to the call. I will admit, I was in tears to hear the father cry and laugh at the same time with the delivery of his second daughter.
She'd be honoring him, too.
Yes. We asked, we invited Bobby to come out here. Unfortunately, without work, nobody will be here. Chelsea? It's the dispatchers such as Chelsea who provide this service. We have not a benefit for Chelsea being here because she's going to be the first recipient of our STOR PIN for every time we have a child delivered by a dispatcher, as well as we will be moving forward to a baby wall, where we will keep record of the child's first name in this behalf, which Ivory is the child that was born, and we will memorialize all the future children that are born through the help of dispatchers and the first responders receive or arrive on scene. So, Chelsea, I would like to say thank you. I am very proud to assist you in this agency and help you become everything you can through our industry. I would like to say, officials, I wish I could bring everybody from the Center at once. They are all working very diligently to improve their own performance and make sure that the residents have the best possible service. I'm grateful for you giving me the ability to come here as well, and I look forward to giving you just good news and bringing more dispatchers in to recognize for amazing performance.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to move into the Commissioner's Agenda. We have on the next docket, we have the approval of the 2020 holiday schedule. I think that was all in your packet. Any comments or questions before we move on this? Motion approved. We have a motion and a second for the 2020 holiday schedule. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Now, we're going to go into an agreement here with Pulse Technology. This is to provide maintenance for the mail machine and scale at the Porter County Courthouse for one year in the amount of $1,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an agreement to provide maintenance for the mail machine and scale at the Porter County Courthouse for one year. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have Unum Life Insurance Company. This is an amendment number three for Porter County employees, which affects the amount of life insurance for your dependents. The effective date of these changes is September 1, 2009. Scott, you want to?
I need to read the next one, too.
We also have another one for Unum Life. This is the entire summary of benefits is replaced by amendment number four for the Porter County employees, which changes only apply to deaths and covered losses that occur in disabilities.
So, not to make this any more confusing than it is, but the way our life insurance for the employees, the employees have a certain amount of life insurance, it's part of their employee package. As part of that, depending on the amount of life insurance the employee chooses, then that kind of determines the amount the spouse can have. Our old plan or our current plan language has the amounts for the spouse kind of locked in that cause some problems. As far as, a couple of years ago, we had another situation where Unum had the same type of situation, except the amounts were coming in increments for the spouse instead of being locked to the amount the actual employee had. So, this is a housekeeping measure. This is changing the benefits the employees are having or have been being offered. It's just a housekeeping matter because it came up in unfortunate circumstances, far as after a spouse had passed away and this came to light. So, this is a, again, a housekeeping matter for the life insurance that applies to the employees and their spouses.
Can we vote on these together?
We can.
Motion to approve. All changes.
Second. We have a motion and a second for amendment number three and amendment number four for the Porter County life insurance benefit with Unum Life Insurance. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now, we're going to move into some pay applications, so everyone hang tight. This is a lot of work that's being done throughout the county, and these are pay applications so we can get all these different contractors and workers paid. The first one up is the Valparaiso Downtown Courthouse renovation. We have two pay apps, number four and number five, for J.W. Werns and Sons, and they are the ones that did the historical windows on the building. And I think we can vote on these two together, correct?
Yeah.
Motion to approve payout number four and payout number five for the Valparaiso Courthouse.
Second. We have a motion and a second for payout number four and payout number five for J.W. Werns and Sons. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. We also, next for Valparaiso Courthouse, is we have payout number seven for Gatlin Plumbing and Heating, and this is their final payment.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Gatlin Plumbing and Heating payout number seven, final payment for the Valparaiso Courthouse. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have, this is the Expo Center, still paying out there. We have two pay apps, payout number 10 and payout number 11 for Pangier Corporation. I'll put those up on the docket now for payment, for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Pangier Corp payout 10 and payout 11. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Next up on Expo Center is DA Dodd, who's the mechanical contractor. We have payout number nine and payout number 10, and payout number 10 is the final payment.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second for DA Dodd payout nine, payout 10, which is final payment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Pangier Corporation payout number 10 and payout number 11. Payout number 11 is the final payment on this job. I'll move it to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Pangier Corp payout number 10 and payout number 11, which is the final payment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. We're now going to move to 157 Franklin Street renovation. This project is under construction as we speak. The first one on the list is Circle R Mechanical. This is payout number two for plumbing work.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for payout number two for Circle R Mechanical. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Continental Electric. They're the electrician on the job. Payout number three, throw it to the floor.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. To approve? To approve.
Yes, to approve, sorry.
Continental Electric payout number three. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Pangier Corp payout number two, and this is for labor and material. All those open it to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second for Pangier Corp payout number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. And then, we have Stevens Engineers and Constructors in the amount of $173,292,35. This is payout number two for engineering work.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Stevens Engineers and Constructors. Payout number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Now, we're going to move to the North County Courthouse renovation. This project, too, is under construction, and I know we're scrambling up there right now to get the parking lot and get everything in here before winter hits, so I know there's a lot of activity going on up there right now as we get ready to turn over some of the new building and a lot of work happening up there. First one we have is Arctic Engineering. This is payout number two for plumbing.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Arctic Engineering payout number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Circle R Electric payout number four.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Circle R Electric payout number four. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Mechanical Concepts. This is payout number four for North County Reno and Portage.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Mechanical Concepts payout number four for HVAC. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Next up is Midwest Tile and Interiors. This is payout number one for flooring.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Midwest Tile and Interiors payout number one for flooring. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. We have Kleckner Interior Systems payout number three. This is metal studs, drywalling, and drop ceiling.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Kleckner Interior Systems payout number three. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Stans Painting and Decorating payout number two, and this is for the painting of the interior of the building.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Stans Painting and Decorating payout number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. These all, can these three be done or four? No, the change order can't be done. We can do the other ones. We can do the three. So, the next up on the agenda, we have Zilkowsky Construction. This is for payout number nine, payout number eight, and allowance authorization number three, and this is for demo and masonry and bid package number one and two. We'll vote on these three together.
Motion to approve all three.
Second. We have a motion for all three, Zilkowsky Construction payout number nine, payout number eight, and an allowance authorization number three. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Zilkowsky, again, is on the board. This is for change order number five in the amount of $28,650 to provide four pipe bollards outside the judge's office and removal of unsuitable soils in the parking lot. When we were getting into the parking lot up there and tearing into some new area, we got into some really bad soil, so in those kind of situations, you just have to dig it out and you have to replace it properly, and that's what this change order does, and then it also creates a couple of security bollards that we're placing near the building for just safety issues and other things. We want to make sure that we create some barriers around the building, so that's what that change order number five is for.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for change order number five for Zilkowsky Construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Number 11, we'll do these separate because they're two separate things. Circle R Electric, this is an allowance authorization number two.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Circle R Electric allowance authorization number two. What that means is in the budget, there is an allowance line item, and what we're doing is in this motion, we're basically going in and saying, this is what we're going to be spending in that allowance line item that's in the budget. So, it's more of an accounting thing, but just to keep you off the stuff of what we're doing here. So, we have allowance authorization number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Yep. Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Next up is Circle R Electric. This is change order number two, an amount of $51,800 to provide power to doors, electrical revisions, power to microwave, new light pole, main entrances off Willow Creek, copper phone lines, low voltage wiring for food pantry, and rough ends for security. So, this is a change order that has a lot of things in it, since we're also splitting some cost on the second building with Portage Township. Some of these costs in this change order will be paid by Portage Township. We're the authority that executes the contractual part of this, so once this is executed, the split will happen between who pays, who pays for what. So, that is change order number two in the amount of $51,800. We've also added some more cameras outside the parking lot. We've been, before we had our last chance in building this parking lot, we took one more last change and looked at it to make sure that we had everything in there with regards to security, a lot of different things that we looked at. A lot of this is for access control, which is inside the building, so where the Jeros are going to be holding prisoners and things during court proceedings. We've put a lot of access controls in there, which means you can't get people in and out without going through a whole protocol. So, it's just a lot of extra layers of security in there. We want to make sure that the building was safe as we create this new building.
Oh, we also had the Sally Port, which we don't have a Sally Port, correct, currently.
Yeah, or any prisoner storage. That building has no prisoner storage right now. If you were to go up there, the prisoners are in the lobby with everybody else. It's sort of a, sort of a, not a good thing, I don't think. We don't think.
You're being kind.
Well, I'm trying to be kind, but long overdue. Let's just put it that way.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for change order number two for Circle R Electric in the amount of $51,800. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. And thank you for bearing with us on that, but it's housekeeping and we got to keep our guys paid. Next up, Rhonda Young. She's our HR Director, and she's got some things she wants to talk about. Good morning, Rhonda.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good.
Good.
I've been working with Enterprise Rental Car to do an agreement for the Porter County employees to rent a car and be able to drive it to seminars, and I figured out with the cost, it saves the departments half by renting a car. You can rent a car for $46 with what we've been working with, rather than paying mileage, which is costing departments a lot of money. So, it's estimate about half.
And what do they have to do to be able to qualify for this? Do they get put on a?
Well, I started with six departments that I did a report and average of who traveled the most, so I set up six departments with their own account numbers. So, if it's approved, I'll meet with those department has, they'll have an account number that they can give their employee that's going to the seminar, and so that account number will allow them to say I'm from Porter County Government.
And it won't charge the sales tax and all the other things?
No, they won't charge anything, and then that department will get billed. That way, we don't have everything coming to the auditor's office. It will go to the health department or 911.
And they can verify that and then approve it and send it off to the auditor's department?
Yes, and then, just like they would in the mileage claim.
Okay.
So, they can pick up that they have a seminar on Thursday, they can pick up the car on Wednesday, they can leave their car there, any Enterprise, they can leave their car there, pick up the rental car, take it home, and go straight to Indy, and then come back, drop the keys off if in the box, if it's closing time, take their car.
Okay.
Do they have to provide payment then and right at the time that they lease the vehicle?
No, no. Took about six weeks. I've been working on it, so they set up all of the accounts that it will get billed after to that department.
Sort of takes care of our credit card issue, too, that we're always so worried about up here, so that's another way of working through that issue as well, too, so.
And then, that way, you know, employees, some of them have leases, they worry about their miles.
Right.
Some cars aren't in the greatest shape. Now, you can be there and go there safe.
Get there safely, right? At half the price.
Half the price.
We like half the price.
Yeah, sounds like a win-win. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Enterprise. This is an agreement to provide discounted vehicle rentals to be used for transportation to seminars by county employees. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Rhonda, how does it work? Right when I was voting, something popped in my head. How's it work, then? Do they have a blanket policy for our insurance, or will these people have to give their driver's licenses?
It's a blanket policy for our insurance, knowing that we're from Porter County.
And what about verification of the driver for?
No, they don't need verification because their insurance will take care of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Forgot what you look like.
I've been hiding down south.
Yeah?
Hiding, baby.
Good morning, Lori Daly.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good.
What do you got here for us?
I have a couple of transfers to just cover some line items through the end of the year. Couple of these went before the council last month, so it's housekeeping to get these approved by you. Give me a read of them.
And this, you think, will take you out through the end of the year?
Yeah, it's more of just a cushion, just in case. With the New Year's Eve party, we're a little bit concerned about the event expense line item.
And when are you going to, have you been in front of the council yet, or?
Yes, on all of them except for the insurance.
Which is the last.
The last one, correct.
And you've already been approved?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Motion to approve all five transfers.
We have a motion and a second to approve all the requests of transfers for the Expo Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Lori, how is, with your new staff and everybody getting trained up, have the, my question to you, has the phones been ringing?
Phones have been ringing off the hook. The inquiries through the websites at wedding receptions have quadrupled for next year, so it's been extremely busy. The new staff, the new two full-time employees have been fabulous. I couldn't be more pleased.
Is your new website working out well?
The new website?
The website.
We updated it a little bit, but yeah, we made, yeah, we made it pretty. But we, yeah.
I mean, it's new.
Yeah.
And it seems like every day, there's a new inquiry coming in.
Yeah, quite a few, yeah. Plus, we still have all the annual events that are with us every year.
How about the holiday parties and things that have been picking up?
We've had a couple inquiries, but we've already, we're already booked on the weekends, so try to convince them to come during the week.
Yeah, that's what you do.
Yeah, we'll get them.
Well, it's good to see and good to hear. Like to keep that positive momentum, keep moving forward.
We're doing good.
I'm hearing a lot of positive things when I'm out in the community, too, so that's very promising, so.
To hear people's reactions when they walk in.
So, we do hear good things from a customer.
Yeah. The bathrooms are the biggest that they love.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions of Lori? Thank you, Lori Daly.
Thank you.
Next up, Animal Shelter. We got Tony Bianchi, the Director. We have a request to transfer funds here as well. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you all?
Good. How are you doing?
I'm good.
So, what do you got for us, Tony?
Okay, we have three transfers.[1791.01] Okay, we have three transfers. The first one is for moving money from Vet Services in our supplemental account to hourly payroll to cover hourly wages until the end of the year. And then I have two other transfers from the general fund vehicle repairs and maintenance account to our other supplies account to transfer money to cover the cost of additional cameras we're going to be installing, hopefully, in the next month or so. Cover some of the areas we didn't cover with the first set of cameras that we installed. And then I also wanted to transfer some money to purchase some tops for some of our kennels and some different types of doors. The tops are needed because we have some escape artists.
Some jumpers.
That like to get out. And the doors, we're looking at putting more doors with open doors because some of the dogs, you know, our, our issue before was we didn't have the closed doors and now some of the dogs require those because they get a little crazy inside without being able to see out.
I got you.
So like to be able to have a little bit of both. So if the dog prefers to see out, we can give them that option or if we need to keep them closed off from everybody, we have that option also. So.
All right, all makes sense. Motion to approve the three transfers.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the three transfers for the Animal Shelter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
Just a little heads up, we did the shelter games about three weeks ago and it was awesome. Everybody had a great time. We did a lot of exchanging of ideas between the three shelters that came and we plan to do it every year from now on.
Good. Talking together never hurts.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Did we win the game?
We kind of screwed up.
Listen to her.
We lost the tournament because they brought a bunch of guys.
Worked better.
Worked better.
Okay, IT Department, Don Galsen. Morning, Don.
Hi.
How you doing?
Well, I'm doing okay.
Yeah? So what do you got here? First one is NCI and what's this for?
It's for the Ethernet cabling and the fiber cabling for 157 Franklin.
Any questions of Don? So what this will do is it'll, this will provide the head-in equipment for the Ethernet, which will be primarily used by 911 in the new building?
Yeah, with the prosecutors and adult population.
Okay, so they'll be using it.
That's all.
Okay, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for NCI. This is an agreement to provide network cabling for 157 Franklin Building. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries.
The next one is a contract with MITCO. What I would like to do is replicate my backups from the courthouse every night down to NIPSCO, uh, NIPSCO, MITCO. This will be a service contract for three years with, probably next year, we're going to put some VMware host down there, servers down there that will be able to run applications right from our disaster recovery site in case something should happen up here. So this is what this is.
So this protects us in case we get hacked or?
Where the building burns down or something.
Yep, just providing backup.
Backup.
So more maintenance.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a quote to provide backup storage off-site heber in the amount of $359 per month. This is a three-year contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. And what's your last one?
The last one is, yeah, the access control and the camera cabling for North County. We had two quotes. Videotech came in at $165,719.67. ATN Technology came in at $123,052. We're recommending we take ATN Technology.
ATN? Is your responsible bidder then?
Yes.
That's who you're recommending?
They call it apples to apples.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the quote from ATN Technology.
Second. We have a motion and a second for ATN Technology for the North County Annex Building. This is for access control, $49,887, and for cameras of $73,165. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Don. Everything going okay down there?
Yeah, we're, we're having fun.
Well, I think looking, looking at what we're doing here next with Buildings Facilities, I think you may be getting some relief down there.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Good morning, Ray.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Buildings Facilities, Ray Cloyde. What do you got for us, Ray?
First one we have is for proposals to do the HVAC in the IT Department to put a, the environment that we need in there to secure everything and make it where it's humidity and the temperature's right in that apartment.
Yep.
Where the servers are.
And I can, I can say for the last several years, we have talked about this issue quite a bit. We're, obviously want to make sure that we maintain and keep all of our IT equipment cool and keep it in a good environment. It helps the equipment last longer. And I know this is something that Don has been struggling with down there for quite some time and we finally found some money in our budgets to be able to get this done and get this work taken care of so they don't have to worry about that anymore down there. So.
Do you have a recommendation?
Do you have a recommendation on who you'd like to use here?
Mechanical concepts is nice.
Yep.
Motion to approve the quote by mechanical concepts at $51,772.
Second. We have a motion and a second for mechanical concepts to furnish necessary labor, equipment and material to upgrade the administration buildings server room HVAC system. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. And now next one up, you got material and equipment to install unit heaters in the North County Highway Garage. Take us through that.
Right now, the system isn't really designed to heat that whole building up. We're wasting a lot of money just on the electric bill, the heating bill, gas bill alone. So we reached out to some vendors to see what kind of system we can get and DA Dodd came in with the best system to put in there. Two heaters that are actually infrared that will heat up that garage and save us money on our gas bill.
So this will help lower those utility bills down in that building up there?
Yeah.
Because I know we've talked about this for quite some time as well too. So that's good, we're taking an action on it.
Motion to approve the quote by DA Dodd at $23,900.
Second. We have a motion and a second to install unit heaters in the North County Highway Garage for $23,900 to DA Dodd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Three, Canteen. What do you got here?
Diamond Vending has withdrawn their proposal last meeting that we had. They don't feel like they could service us properly, so Canteen is our current vendor. We're going to re-sign with them.
We need a motion for that probably? Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Canteen. This is a services agreement to provide vending machines throughout the county buildings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Elevator contracts. Is this replacing the old one? This is, this is a momentous occasion here for the county government because this contract...
We've been waiting for a while.
We've been waiting to renew this contract at least for what, three years now?
Three.
And this contract has a history of over 20 years old. It was on auto renewal and we found it.
The original Genesis.
Four years ago.
No auto renewal provision.
Right. Yeah, and the new green one has no auto. So this is our last auto renewed contract that we have been waiting for quite some time on. And so this is a big day for me anyway. Because I deal with elevators a lot in my other world and this is one that, well, we're writing it, we're making it right today. So just had to sort of give a little commentary on that.
Otis has the, has the current, or has had it.
Yes.
And now they're not responding because they have to bid.
Yes.
I'm shocked.
Yeah, right.
So they were taking advantage of the county.
Well, we, we sorted in, we sort of entered into some things blindly 20-some years ago and we found it, so we're fixing it today. So I'll make the motion for Schindler elevators at $6,600.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Schindler elevator for $6,600 for three quotes for new elevator service contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, same thing.
For, we're doing updates on the elevators. We're doing solid state starters for two of the elevators here in the admin building. The one at the courthouse is already up to date and then we're also doing the ADA telephones that need to be updated too.
Yep. And so for some of you that don't understand, the federal government requires us to keep these elevators up to speed, up to certain compliances. And as we've moved into the new technology area today world, that's what a lot of this upgrading of these elevators will take place in them. So that's, that's what's up for us right now.
Motion to approve the quote by Schindler elevator at $8,700.
Second. We have a motion and a second for elevator updates from Schindler elevator for $8,700. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Then we have three quotes for window tinting at the courthouse. And why don't you give us a little outline here of what you got going on, Ray, and give us your, your recommended thoughts on this?
Okay, we looked at window coverings for the windows. Window tint was more reasonable than doing blinds again. We are doing a reflective on the outside so you can't see in during the day, so it protects, you know, our people inside and it also shades them. It blocks 95% of light coming in. And then we also have a warranty with this that protects our windows still.
Okay.
Are you confident this is going to do the trick?
I'm pretty confident.
It blocks 95% of the lighter?
95% of the light.
UV.
The UV that's coming in, so.
So it should block a lot more light.
So I'm hoping that it does a good for the jury rooms. If anything, that's the only thing we have to really be concerned about really is the construction.
Well, and also the other problem we have with window treatments in there in that building is where we affix the window treatments, these are all plastered ceilings. And the way with the new windows going in right now, it really isn't a, it really isn't a conducive, you start drilling into plastered walls like this, hanging things like this on the edge of windows and that, it's just going to cause us problems from now till whenever. And that was sort of the problem we were wrestling with on this, but I think this will be a good solution for that.
The periodic cost of the cleaning of the blinds, it's just a hassle.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
So are you recommending, who are you recommending out of the three, Ray?
Oh, the Window Film Depot.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Window Film Depot for $17,995 for window tinting at the historic courthouse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. And then give us an update on the courthouse flooring, floor covering project.
A couple of weeks ago, we started on third floor doing the courtrooms. We completed the three courtrooms on the third floor. We're going to do the second floor in December when that judge is out of town and when he's free vacation. We're currently doing the administration building here, doing the surveyors next this week.
Good.
So we're moving forward on this old carpet that's needing to be replaced.
And I would like to point out to everybody that this carpet work is being self-performed by our own department. So I know we're saving a tremendous amount of money by these gentlemen doing this work themselves and it looks great. They're doing a great job, Ray. So kudos to them and thank you for taking this project on. It's a big project and that'll leave the courthouse in pretty good shape once we're done with all this stuff, so. Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good week.
You too.
Highway Department, Rich Sexton.
Okay, good. Didn't miss my name.
All right, I'll just say it. I love your shirt.
It's that time of year.
I know. I definitely like it.
Think warm.
It's, I think there's a thing on. It is festive.
Okay, what do we got here, guys? I think we're getting down to the finalization of this Enterprise fleet management that we're moving to for our county vehicles.
Yeah, we, me and Jim, we've talked to a bunch of towns in Porter County and a bunch of other counties and every single person that works for them, that works for their street department, highway department, from the superintendent down, has a snowplow on the truck. And every year, it seems like we're coming back in here and asking for more money for overtime. Well, we put five more plows on the road for this little cost versus putting one dump truck on the road. I think it's a well-spent money right there to just be able to come out and knock out these little cul-de-sacs that we got in the old Salt Creek Commons, South Haven areas. Just to get those knocked out before the big truck has to go in there. I think it'll save on accidents as well with them backing up and stuff, so.
And this is the backfill to the Enterprise agreement for the, obviously for the five trucks they're getting here.
So these five trucks with that per month fee, has that blade built into that cost?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
And the reason why these are a little slightly different is because to get them for this winter, some of these were sourced off of existing lots.
I gotcha, so they changed it.
There might be a slight difference in accessory here or there, but the basis, the base accessories that were needed were on that all.
Yep.
And the future moves forward, when we would be getting these direct from the manufacturer and they will all be exact.
Gotcha.
But they all, the bare minimum, we all wanted heated mirrors for backing up and they all had to have a backup camera. So, and all the F-250s, gas with four-wheel drive.
And these are turned over every three years?
Every certain amount of miles.
Okay.
Scott knows more about it than that.
No, it's, I...
It's a two to four-year window that we're looking at.
Okay. Need a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Enterprise fleet management rate for five Ford pickup, F-250 pickup trucks for Porter County Highway Department with snowplows included. All those in favor signify by saying aye.[1603.24] All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Riggs Outdoor Power Equipment. What do you got?
That's the snowplows for these five trucks. They're already included in...
Oh.
In our enterprise rental. We were just showing the price of buying the five plows.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to second for the power equipment, or quote to install the, uh, all the equipment for the, uh, snowplows on the new trucks. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. And next, the, the next two, you got additionals? So what do we got here?
This is the additional for the overtime, uh, to get this through the fall, we're pay, when we pave, sometimes it will go over. But this has been one of those, uh, I guess weird summers where we just get a tree down like every weekend or every day, every weekend, it seems like. And you're always conflict paying that two hours and it's just been building up and then now this is where we're at. And hopefully with the five new snowplows, we can cut our overtime back significantly by getting five more plows out there and eight, minimum eight hours a day.
It's always on the weekends this year.
It, it, yeah. It's just, I, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to second for a request for additional appropriations, one from Fund 1176 in the amount of $25,000 to account 1130 overtime. And the other one is for Fund 1169 in the amount of $20,000 to account 2210 for gas, fuel, and lubrication. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then the last one?
This is the purchase, this, it's the last piece of equipment for our chip and seal program that we got. It's, uh, what we've done is they would have agreed to take all the rental that we paid into this piece of equipment off the price. And we traded in a backhoe that was in need of repair and actually really not being used at all because it was not roadworthy. And, uh, we've gone from a total price of about $49,500 down to just $25,500. And if we were to get, start with renting it again next year, we'd be back at the, say, just a little bit of depreciation plus the rental. I, it would be, we'd, we'd almost pay out that in rental for next year.
Yeah.
So instead of just, because it's the same machine we've rented for like the last three or four years and it's only three or four years old.
Yep.
So.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to second for Westside Tractor Sales. This is an agreement to purchase a sheet split roller in the amount of $25,500 to assist with the county's chip and seal program. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
I got the farmer's almanac out. It says it's gonna be real cold and a blistery winter.
Oh.
And I don't wanna hear that, but... I know, so that's why he's got the shirt on. He's trying to fight it back.
But it's only gonna snow during the week, so we're gonna be good.
Yeah.
That never happens.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
You guys look familiar?
Strangely, they look familiar.
Alright. So this is development and stormwater management. Uh, Bob Thompson and, and Mike Novotny team up that departments. Uh, and what do you got for us first here? Bob?
First is DLZ. Um, this is a supplemental agreement to Bridge 68. This is for the right-of-way portion of this contract.
So are we buying some additional right-of-way, uh, for this bridge?
Yes, there'll be some additional right-of-way that's necessary.
And why are we doing that?
Uh, part of that, I mean, we went through an analysis on this. Um, they gave us a few scenarios that we were gonna have to either, one, relocate that ditch to get it under a better skew underneath that bridge, uh, which we did not want to do because of the fact that it would be significant amount of right-of-way we'd have to purchase. Uh, there are some, uh, walls that they're gonna have to be putting in and slopes that are gonna go in, um, to the neighboring areas, uh, with this construction.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to second for DLZ of Indiana. This is a right-of-way agreement for the bridge replacement of Bridge 68, uh, over Smoke Road, uh, on Smoke Road over Jones Ditch, uh, with a not-to-exceed amount of $29,680. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. NDOT, this is a grant for entry onto government-owned real estate on State Road 2, the old county home site. I think I know what that's for.
Yes, this is where the roundabout is gonna be going in for Heavland and State Road 2. On that, uh, the actual right-of-way, uh, phase of it is going through with NDOT right now, but what they're requesting is to be able to have right of entry onto the old home property to start doing some of the clearing of the proposed right-of-way.
Motion to approve.
Some trees need to be taken out.
Correct.
Second. We have a motion and a second, uh, for a grant for entry onto government-owned real estate on State Road 2 for the old county home site, uh, for NDOT. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Bob, on that one, have we gotten the final agreement? I know Matt was working on it too. You have not gotten the final agreement back from NDOT?
It worked, no.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we get eyes on that, uh, because of what we negotiated with the state on the land that we gave them versus what we're getting back. I just wanna make sure that that's all going the way that we thought, that we agreed that it would go, so.
Gentlemen from NDOT, I still need that here.
I'm just making a bet. I'm just making sure before we move on anything, so, uh, um, thank you. Sure. Thank you. Uh, next up?
Uh, this is supplemental agreement for Bridge 84. This is 800 South over Cobb's Creek Branch, uh, with Sea Over Group. Uh, Sea Over Group, in the very beginning, uh, went through a number of hydraulic analysis or the stormwater review, Mike and I. We kept on asking for different scenarios and everything and they approached us and said, you know, with some additional work. And Mike and I agreed that, you know, this is worth a supplemental agreement because of all of the, uh, different analysis that we were requesting them to go through.
And when is this bridge scheduled for the 23?
Yes.
Oh.
Look ahead on the agenda.
Okay. We're advertising for the bids.
I didn't see it under there because of all those little bullet points there. Okay. We'll defer to that till then.
Okay.
No, we have not. We have not. So I'll throw it to the floor.
Motion to approve the supplemental agreement.
Second. We have a motion to second for Sea Over Group. This is a supplemental agreement for engineering services of Bridge 84. This is 800 South over Cobb's Creek Branch. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay. United Consulting. This is an LPA consulting cra, contract for the replacement of Bridge 131 at County Road 200 West over Damon Run. And why don't you explain what an LPA contract is so everyone in the room understands?
LPA is local public agency. We are receiving federal funds on this, so this is an NDOT, um, boilerplate contract that they have. And it's, basically, we're entering into design services agreement with United for, um, the reconstruction of the, the design of the bridge on 131, which is 200 West over Damon Run.
Yep.
On that, and there's always gonna be three phases with the contracts. This is the design engineer, this, design engineering, excuse me, another contract will be coming or supplemental later for the right-of-way acquisition services such as what we saw in 84. And then, uh, construction inspections if we go forward with that.
Motion to approve.
Second. Uh, motion to second for United Consulting. This is an LPA consulting contract, uh, for the replacement of Bridge 131 at County Road 200 West over Damon Run. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have, uh, a consultant recommendation for design services of Bridge 73. And this is, uh, 50, 50 West over Cobb Ditch.
Correct. Uh, what you see listed here on the agenda is all of the consultants that did, um, submit letters of interest to us. We were hoping to have the recommendation down to you prior to the agenda, um, so you knew right up front. Um, somebody couldn't get their act together and get it done in time. Um, so we are coming forward with the recommendation for WSP consultants to, um, go forward with this work. This is the bridge that washed out during the flooding events.
That was the South County?
Yeah.
Right. Right.
I remember seeing that, driving out there.
Right. And then Mike's been working with FEMA to get the funding. We do have the funding in place, so we're going, we're requesting to go forward now with the design.
So he did get our FEMA money for this, or part of it, or?
Yeah. It'll, it'll cover 75% of, of our project costs.
Okay.
That'll be important with the farmers that's down there.
Yes.
Motion to approve WSP as a consultant for design services.
Second. We have a motion and a second for WSP for being the consultant, uh, chosen for design services of Bridge 73. This is 50 West over Cobb Ditch. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Six, a request for approval to seek bids for Bridge 84.
Correct.
Now we can talk about Bridge 84.
Correct. The plans, the bid package is ready to go. Matter of fact, we brought down the front page of the plans that we're recommending. The commissioners signed this and then Mike will attest it so that way, uh, it will be ready for the actual bid set going forward. We're requesting to go forward now to seek bids on this.
Okay. Any questions of the board? No?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to second for approval to seek bids for Bridge 84. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
I guess just one item. This is the last bridge on the capital improvement plan that we're going forward, so.
Oh. Excellent.
Yes.
Excellent.
Uh, 126 is complete and open. We still have some guardrail issues that we're gonna be working on here shortly. And then, uh, 135 is open also, so those two bridges are pretty much done.
Yeah, we'll buy 135. It looked good.
Yeah.
Yep. That's part of, how many bridges do we take care of in this county? Hundred and...
128.
128 bridges that we're responsible for in this county. So, a lot of work going on there as well. Okay. Any other questions or comments, guys?
Nope.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna move the agenda a little bit here. Rich, I caught ya. You were making a dash for the front. We'd like to have Edwin Kerr right now, Courtside Ministries, uh, come forward. Um, I know we, they have some, uh, scheduling issues here that we wanted to sort of get them on their way, so thank you, uh, uh, thank you, Rich, for allowing us to move this around a little bit. Um, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
I would see we have Scott Waggonblast here too.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, go ahead.
Attorney Waggonblast, how are you?
I'm fine. Thank you very much. And I also appreciate the courtesy of...
Appreciate you getting over to the bit.
...switching the agenda for a few minutes. So thank you very much.
I believe as we've, uh, you and I have discussed, uh, between the last meeting and this meeting on the requirements or the restrictions that the commissioner's office were looking at on the Courtside Ministries request, basically what it boils down to is that it would be a blanket request. It would be for, uh, we would start now, but it would be for, moving forward, it would be on a year-to-year basis.
Calendar year basis.
Calendar year. That way they only have to come once, um, a year. And then basically the restrictions would be staying off the square pad in front of the main entrance door. That's for security reasons. Uh, I think it has been the issue with causing some friction between court security and their, and their organization.
And just so we're clear, we're talking about the square pad on the south side where people actually enter, not what appears to be the main entrance on the north side.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. The actual south side entrance. Uh, it'd be good for a year if, I know this may not apply necessarily, but part of this would be if, in fact, during the week, somebody came and requested the entire grounds, then hits the blanket approval for Courtside Ministries were in the fly for that particular day. I understand that normally those type of requests are happening on weekends and not during the week in which they are, um, doing, uh, their programming. So, but it, just in case we had that conflict, we would have that. And then the last would be, uh, again, for security issues and the different things happening in that courthouse on a daily basis, that, uh, not approaching individuals, obviously being prepared to have the request and, uh, they have their table and they know they have the approval from the city of Albo to be on the sidewalk and they have those things. And all of that is fine. We're just, again, dealing with the security at the courthouse, um, and making it clear so that we know what they are approved to do. I can communicate with court security on what they're allowed to do so we can hopefully eradicate the interactions that we've had between, uh, the Courtside Ministries and the court security. Um, and then just make sure that we're keeping everybody safe over there and allowing Courtside Ministries to do, uh, what they're proposing to do. So, as long as we're in agreement with that, uh, we'll let the minutes reflect this. Basically, if the commissioners approve this, this would be the agreement that I can then circulate to the court security and that way, uh, they can proceed without those issues and we all know exactly what we're supposed to be doing and not doing.
I wanted to indicate that I appreciated your time and attention to this. I know I called you off hours at times, and so I wanted to let you know I appreciate that. I also wanted to let you know openly here before the, the board of commissioners that I have spoken with Edwin, we've shared some information and some opinions about the restrictions you requested and we are fine with those and accept those. And if we have any further issues that come up, whether it's court security or if there's any other kind of complaint made, I've indicated to Edwin that it's my intention to try to provide some reasonable pro bono services to try to resolve those things as they are all, also volunteers. So I, I wanted to indicate to you, I appreciate that time. I appreciate the, uh, consideration of the commissioners and we will try to obviously abide by the restrictions and thank you very much.
And then if the commissioners were to approve this, it would be for the remainder of 19 and all of 20.
Okay.
With those restrictions as we've laid out.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, for a request, uh, to, uh, for this, uh, Courtside Ministries to use, uh, the, uh, south side of the building?
Well, they, everything but the south side entrance landing pad.
Yeah. Okay. Everything but the south side landing pad for the courthouse. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We, we would like to request a, a letter from the commissioners, uh, stating this because we need to present this to our executive director and so that we could be clear to anyone who, uh, attacks us that we, uh, have, are authorized to do this.
We will, uh, provide the letter and the copy of the minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Hudson, now you can come forward.
Morning, Rich.
Good morning, commissioners.
Um, this proclamation is actually after the fact, since, uh, September 16th through the 20th of this year was, uh, Septic Smart Week. But due to scheduling my, uh, my time and, and getting on, uh, your, uh, September, uh, meeting didn't work. So, uh, in the past, you have, uh, I guess I'll say been in agreement what this proclamation talks about. Septics are, are used probably in 90% of the, the rural counties and there's half of the county that does, in fact, go to what we're calling coastal community area, which is our northern boundary, which is Lake Michigan. So, um, I would ask that you, uh, sign this so that we can keep, uh, uh, this support going. Um, we have done this in the past and, uh, would like to see this continue. And again, this is after the fact, but just so we have this, we can send a copy on so that there is on file that, uh, we as Porter County are, are in support of this. And I think we'll hear a little more, uh, about this, uh, in the next presentation, so.
Alrighty.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to second for a proclamation declaring September 16th through the 20th, twentieth, two thousand nineteen, septic smart week for coastal communities which Porter County is part of. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you so much.
Next up is the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, Bree Ciara, special projects coordinator, and I think she has a little presentation for us. Good morning.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
Oh man, I'm excited. Thank you, Rich. That is so awesome. I've got some handouts here for you guys and would you like these after I talk or during my talk, see if I've got them?
You can give them to us afterwards.
Okay.
You can get started.
Okay. Do you mind if I stand?
Not at all.
I've been sitting for a while. My name is Bree and I've been a fisheries biologist up here in northwest Indiana for the past, oh, like four and a half years and I've fully made my transition to now working with the Lake Michigan Coastal Program, which is still part of PNR. Our mission is to enhance the state's role in managing and planning for our natural and cultural resources up here within the Lake Michigan watershed. As you guys know, you know, the glaciers moved thousands of years ago and they created this really cool ridge at the northern part of our county. Everything north of that bridge now flows to Lake Michigan and everything south flows into the Kankakee. So we've got two really distinct areas in the county which make for a lot of fun and really interesting work, so. So all of my work focuses on the Lake Michigan watershed and all the non-point force pollution that we may encounter. So as the rain falls and the water moves around the landscape, it picks up things on the ground and within the groundwater and then can deliver it to our streams and rivers and eventually the bay lake. This has really big impacts on everybody who lives within the county and who enjoys the water resources and who uses them for recreation and drinking and all sorts of things. So where do septic come in the picture? Because right now those two concepts are pretty disconnected. Well, obviously septic systems are an in-home treatment facility for sewage point. That sewage then gets treated by the soil and the substrate and the microbes in the soil then before it goes into the groundwater or to local streams and rivers. In Indiana, we have roughly eight hundred thousand septic systems, according to Purdue's latest report. They estimate one-fourth of those septic systems are failing. So that's around two hundred thousand septic systems in the entire state that are failing. Each failing septic system delivers about seventy-six thousand gallons of sewage excrement to the water every single year. So if you think two hundred thousand times seventy-six thousand is a huge number. In Porter County, does anyone want to take a guess on how many we have just in within the Lake Michigan coastal region of septic systems failing and non-failing?
None.
We've got roughly thirteen thousand septic systems just within the northern half of Porter County. So hopefully the same is not true for the rest of the state and not one quarter of them are failing. A couple other counties like LeCort County, they've been able to do some math over the past couple of years and they have less than a two percent failing rate, which is really good, but still even at two percent, that's, you know, a couple million gallons of sewage excrement every single year. So what the heck do we do about it? Well, Lake Michigan Coastal Program partnered with you guys and about thirty-nine other partners within the coastal region and formed a septic system coordination work group. So Rich is part of that. You guys have been excellent partners in this so far. The Porter County Health Department has just been phenomenal to work with. Letty, the pedo there is on point, super smart. Dan Boyd there, everyone is on their game and everyone is helping make this commitment to help our citizens better maintain their septic systems, get them off of septic systems if it's possible. So tying into city sewers, working on local efforts to basically reduce the septic excrement going into our waterways. That's where septic smart week comes from, that September sixteenth through the twentieth this year. It was really awesome. We've got a couple yard signs and communities that have signed on to help us promote this week. So in effort to figure out how many septic systems we have, hotspots where ecolite pollution might be really prominent and a way to combat this, we applied for a grant through the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, which that money comes from the EPA, Great Lakes Restoration Fund and the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. They're all signed on to help us with this. We mapped out septic systems within the region. We looked at hotspots where they're really tightly located, we're working on molecular storage tracking to see is it indeed human ecolite pollution in our waterways or is it something from remnants or birds? Lot of it's looking like humans. And then we're working with clean water ambassadors. We've got quite a few neighborhoods here within Porter County alone, center township, Dune Acres, High Meadows West, Jackson Township, Liberty Township one, Liberty Township two, Mallards Landing, Marine Manor, Ogden Dunes, the Town of Pines, Porter Beach, Villan Manor and Warren Woods, all have ambassadors out there working with their neighbors, educating each neighbor on, hey, you've got a septic system, you might have never had one before. Let me help you take care of it. Here's how we pump it, here's when parts need to be replaced and changed. We created some outreach material very specific to the region that's based off of the EPA septic smart, septic Sam, but we've got informational brochures, we've got home record keeping folders so people can map out where their septic systems are, the last time it was inspected or pumped. All these things really help not only save home value, human health and environmental health. So we're working really, really hard and just appreciate your guys' partnership on this so much. So I came here to say thank you and just to give you guys an update on where we're at and where we hope to go.
Thank you.
We appreciate the work you're doing. We all need clean water.
Definitely, yeah. It's important, that's for sure. So here's some brochures you guys can look at and check them out. And the rest of the crowd, I've got some for you guys too if you'd like.
Well, thank you for coming in and I too would like to thank our health department and Letty and what they're doing down there. I know that the state and the local, we have, a lot of the rules and laws have changed a lot over this, over the past few years. We've run into a lot of contractors and other people that were sort of used to doing it the old way and we've fought those battles to try and get them back into the real world and what we're trying to do here, but it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of patience to have to work through this. So I know we're committed, I know the health department's committed. Now what we got to do is get the local public informed so they understand why we're doing this and the reason for it being. And I can tell you, I do believe a lot of the subdivisions, new subdivisions that are being looked at in the county right now that are sort of out kicking the tires, a lot of the stuff that we're looking at will all have sewer and water to those subdivisions and we would, we highly prefer that just from the environmental standpoint. So thank you for coming in and kudos to everyone involved and let's keep the process going.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bree.
I'm here to help with sewer tying and stuff. I know we work pretty closely with Northwest Indiana for water advisory and making sure, you know, what they've got going on and if they come to us for help. So if you guys see these signs out in your neighbor's yard or around the town, feel free, go to our website, call us, go to your neighbor's yard, you can find out there and we'll definitely help you set up.
Thank you. Next up, we have a request to use the courthouse grounds on Friday, October eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, from two PM till seven PM for the Fall Harvest Festival, which includes a trick or treating in the downtown area. It's quite an event that takes place in the downtown area and so they're requesting, Valparaiso Events is requesting us to use the entire courthouse grounds for that date and time.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for Valparaiso Events to use the courthouse grounds on Friday, October eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, from two till seven PM for the Fall Harvest Festival, which includes trick or treating downtown. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Last on the document, last on the agenda is we have a request from the Northern Indiana Atheists, Troy Moss, director, a request to use the courthouse grounds on Friday, December sixth, from five till eight PM to decorate for the community holiday celebration. They are asking approval to set up their holiday display, two NIA signs and an information table and canopy. Good morning, gentlemen.
Hello.
Morning. My name's Troy Moss, I'm the president of Northern Indiana Atheists.
We're a nonprofit organization established to fight for the separation of church and state locally and to defend the rights of atheists across northern Indiana. I'm here on behalf of a member in Porter County community. I'm here to request permission to place a display on a portion of the Porter County courthouse lawn on December sixth. I first submitted this request on August eighth and was told it would be placed on the agenda for your September third meeting. On August twelfth, Valparaiso Events also submitted a request to use the courthouse lawn. That request, which was sent to you after you received my request on behalf of Northern Indiana Atheists, was placed on the agenda for your August fourteenth meeting and was approved without the presence of anyone from Valparaiso Events. The manner in which you have handled these two requests is troubling and strongly suggests that you are giving preference to an event with a particular religious viewpoint.
Well, I don't agree with that. And if I was given preference, I'd be telling you no, okay? The reason that they were okay that day, we are very familiar with that organization because they're up here every year. You've never been up in front of us and that's why we asked you to be here.
And I think the last meeting, you didn't even show and you were on the agenda and nobody showed up.
No one told us we were supposed to be here.
Motion to approve, listen.
Well, I have more to say. Hold on, the problem is, did we not have, have we already approved something for the day there?
Yeah.
It's taken.
I have more to say.
Go ahead.
On July twenty-five, two thousand nineteen, Northern Indiana Atheists received a state church violation report from one of our members. The complaint stated that Porter County hosts a live nativity on their courthouse lawn in Valparaiso, Indiana every December. The complainant stated that they have complained about the nativity in the past but never received a response. On August eighth, two thousand nineteen, we emailed a request letter to the Porter County Commissioners requesting equal access to the Porter County courthouse property on December sixth to celebrate holidays. Just a short time later, the Commissioners administrative assistant, Kathy Merle, emailed back and asked, can you please send photos and dimensions of the sign you would like to display? We immediately replied, asking if Valparaiso Events are also required to supply photos and dimensions of their displays. This was to make sure we weren't being held to a different standard than other groups making the same type of request. Our research indicated that Valparaiso Events was not required to provide the kind of information, yet their access to the courthouse property has always been approved. In the hopes of clearing up the discrepancy, we requested any photos and dimensions that Valparaiso Events submitted to the Commissioners for their past events. Later that same day, August eighth, Kathy replied, they have been requesting the courthouse grounds long before I came into this office. I'm not sure how their first request was handled. On August fourteenth, we emailed photos and dimensions of everything we were asked or asking to display on the court, on the county courthouse property during holidays, along with the information that this display has been installed inside government buildings in South Bend, Indiana. Kathy replied on August fourteen, confirming that she received the photos and dimensions of our display items and that the next Commissioners meeting would be held on September three. On September three, after the Commissioners meeting, we received an email from Kathy stating, you were not in attendance at the Commissioners meeting this morning, so the Commissioners were unable to discuss your request. Please let me know if you will be attending our October eight meeting or if you are choosing to withdraw your request from our agenda. I immediately emailed Kathy back and said, Kathy, I was unaware that we needed to be in attendance at the Porter County Commissioners meeting in order to, in order for our request to be discussed and voted on. Is there any additional information the Commissioners need from us? Similarly, is there any additional information we need to know? On September three, Kathy emailed back, no Troy, we have all of the information that we need. The meeting will be held ten o'clock on Tuesday, October eight at the address at the Commissioners Chamber. On September nine, we requested a copy of the courthouse usage request made by Valparaiso Events from Kathy. On September nine, Kathy supplied us with Valparaiso Events' request. On September twenty, we did a larger records request for the communication between Porter County Commissioners and Valparaiso Events, Porter County Commissioners policies and past Valparaiso event requests. And a quick history of these requests from Valparaiso Events. In two thousand seventeen, September, they requested to use the courthouse grounds to hold their Fall Harvest Festival in October. No one from Valparaiso Events was present and it was voted on and approved. No one said anything about being the entire courthouse grounds. On October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, Valparaiso Events requested to use the courthouse grounds to hold their holidays events in December. No one from Valparaiso Events was present and it was voted on and approved. No one said anything about it being the entire courthouse grounds. On September eighteenth, Valparaiso Events requested to use the courthouse grounds to hold their Fall Harvest Festival in October. No one from Valparaiso Events was present and it was voted on and approved. No one said anything about it being the entire courthouse grounds. October thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, Valparaiso Events requested to use the courthouse grounds for their holidays event in December. No one from Valparaiso Events was present and it was voted on and approved and no one said anything about it being the entire courthouse grounds. In fact, in two thousand eighteen, a portion of the courthouse grounds was fenced off for construction, so Valparaiso Events managed just fine with limited space. There was precedence for them not needing the entire courthouse grounds for their events. Also breaking from their practice in prior years, this year, Valparaiso Events requested use for holidays even before they requested use for their Fall Harvest Festival. Just yesterday, October seven, we emailed Kathy a request for an additional item to be added to today's agenda. The reply from Kathy was that the deadline for the agenda items is always the Tuesday prior to the Porter County Commissioners meeting. At the August thirteen Commissioners meeting, only five days after we requested equal access and only one day after Valparaiso Events submitted their request, that request somehow made it on to the August thirteen agenda and was unanimously approved. This is a violation of the one-week deadline that Porter County puts on their agenda items. At the August thirteen Commissioners meeting, Commissioner Biggs asked a very loud and deliberate question. He asked, quote, and this is for the whole property, correct? To which Commissioner Good very deliberately replied, that is correct. This was deliberately asked and confirmed by Porter County Commissioners even though the actual usage request from Valparaiso Events did not specify the whole property. And again, breaking from years of recorded history of no one saying anything about Valparaiso Events needing the entire courthouse grounds. On behalf of Northern Indiana Atheists and our members and supporters here in Porter County, I am requesting permission to place the display I described in my August fourteen email on the Porter County courthouse grounds on December sixth. I'm done.
You're finished? Well, we've already got that day and the grounds promised to another venue. As far as the request to be on the agenda this time, as you can tell, the court side ministries have come here more than once and ultimately needed to have an attorney to deal with the issues that we need to deal with there. I understand that your second request this week or late last week, whatever it was, was something close to their same request, correct?
It was exactly their request.
So now you have an idea of what your approval will look like at the next meeting as it relates to the yearly blanket approval to be demonstrated. As far as December sixth and your access, any other day you want?
We want equal access, sir. We want the access we applied for first.
Well, that access isn't available December sixth.
You approved a Valparaiso event before you said anything about our event when we requested it first. So you treated them differently.
We did not.
We put our request in first, sir. What is your policy on items getting onto the agenda? Is it one week Tuesday prior?
That is the Commissioners' general policy, correct.
So if someone like Valparaiso comes the day before a meeting, they have privilege that they can get on your agenda and approved?
Anyone can ask and be put on the agenda because of the Commissioners' policy themselves, which routinely happens, it happened on this agenda with other items.
Is that a written policy?
It's not a written policy because why would it be written when it's the Commissioners' agenda?
Well, that's problematic.
As far as there being a nativity scene, I don't know if you're aware or not, but there will not be a nativity scene at the courthouse grounds this year.
Wasn't aware of that. We still would like access same day.
Well, I'm not, I'm not up here to propagate an issue, you know, problem. You want to be there at the same time they're there for a reason.
To celebrate the holidays.
As a public official, I don't have to promote that.
Promote what?
If you want service, if you want access to the property, we'll give you access, but we're going to determine and we're going to dictate what date that is and what times you have, okay? That is within, that's within the law.
The Constitution.
Well, but I am not going to set up here and I'm not going to promote you being there at the same time somebody else is there for what I believe you're there to cause trouble. That's my opinion.
What's the trouble, we're there to cause?
Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to get into that.
I read our request, sir.
Yeah, I read your request.
Nobody's denying your Valparaiso Events request.
Nobody's denying your request.
We stated it or not.
I believe you are denying our request. We make that available to you.
Just let them vote. It says, sir, in our request, why we're there.
All right, yeah. Like I said, that's my opinion. And nobody, nobody up here is denying you a date for that property.
I think you're about to vote on it.
Well, maybe. Nobody's denying you a date.
Okay, then we'll take.
But we will take what date that is.
Oh, I see.
Because we have, we have other organizations that request that same property.
We requested it first.
Well, my recommendation would be like, just like with court side last one, let's continue for the next meeting and I'll have an opportunity to discuss it with them.
Second. We have a motion in second to continue. Northern Indiana Atheists, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Back to Michiana.
All right, so I wanted to bring up.
What did you say? Nothing.
You said go back to Michiana.
That's where you're from, right?
Yeah, but why'd you say it like that?
I just, I don't know, I said it because I said it. Good day.
Thanks for saying it on record.
Sure.
An update to the last Commissioners meeting.
Look, hold on, hold on. You know, don't come, don't come in here, don't come in here causing trouble, okay? Now I want you to leave.
Okay.
You're not going to sit here staring me down.
Jim.
You know, we're good citizens that also live in Valparaiso, right downtown, grown here, graduated here, that also feel that there is a point that is separation of state and state financially.
The last person up here is going to, is going to argue that is me. I completely understand the separation and we need to have the separation.
On for the holiday celebration.
There's what?
I think to be treating people.
Ma'am, nobody's treating these people any differently, okay? We didn't, hold on a second. Hold on, please, please, hold on a second. And, and from the point, from the time he's come up here, he's been combative. I'm not used to people leaving that, leaving that date and walking through here and staring me down. I don't have to tolerate that. I've done nothing to deserve that.
Well, would you make a comment?
I have not made any side comment in regard to where anybody's from. I have no idea where he's from, and it makes little difference to me.
Work it out.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If we had anybody here, and I'm not trying to be on the business side or anything like that, if there was anyone here that was not of Asian descent and you called them these people, it wouldn't be an extreme prejudice.
Well, now, now, now you're going, I don't, I don't even know what direction you're going in, no.
The same thing. Take a lot of them as a group, calling them these people.
I never said these people. No, I didn't. I didn't just say anything.
All right, a report from the last commissioner's meeting. We were discussing the brassy and the golf ball issue.
I think they're here.
I have met with the council and one of the representatives of the brassy, had a long meeting with them, discussed the issue, had aerials, pulled the approvals of the actual subdivision itself, and the part of that the county was involved in as far as the maintenance garage and where this driving range is located. They will be shutting down the driving range November first. They're committed to working with the county on several different ideas to alleviate the golf balls leaving the driving range, including, things we discussed included the position and angle of the driving range, additional screening at the driving range, additional personnel and or monitoring at the driving range, being additional clarity as to the responsibility of those golf balls, also with the potential to have individuals removed from the brassy use of the driving range if, in fact, the golf balls leave. So November first, the driving range will shut down. Before it reopens, these all of, these possible fixes to reduce the golf balls leaving the brassy will occur and will be updated here before the driving range reopens. Next spring.
Can I say anything?
Sure.
Okay. I'm Evelyn Camunas, ten eighty-seven North Pearson Road, and I am probably the one that gets affected the most. They normally do shut down. They're not doing us a favor by shutting down by November first.
I didn't say it was a favor.
Okay.
They're shutting down November first. I'm just highlighting the fact that I believe we're roughly three weeks away from this not being a concern until the spring when they reopen.
Right. And, and that's what they usually do until spring, depending on the weather. And they definitely need to, there is no part in my yard that is protected by a net. You can go drive down the road, and you see a big net in front of my house. But ask if they're hitting it directly at me at a ninety-degree angle, which, that's not where the driving range is. When they're slicing it, there is no net that protects any part of my front yard, my backyard, myself, or a neighbor next to me. We are completely in the open. And so they definitely need to extend that net, raise it, and extend it. I don't know, quite a few, two hundred fifty feet or more, because it's wide open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you mentioned that you had communicated with the brassy, either the management owner or the lawyer. Is there any possible way we can get a copy of the communication?
It was an in-person meeting.
It was an in-person meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Between all those neighbors, we're probably getting excess between myself, the neighbor to the north of me, and then Evelyn's the next property to the north of that, we're probably getting an excess of three, four hundred golf balls a summer, but to, just between the three properties. Now, since the last meeting, which was a month ago, just a few days after we had our meeting, I had damage to my truck again for the sixth time. I called down here after the officer left my property on the sixth and left a message with somebody at the switchboard to contact Commissioner Biggs and to give him my name and phone number, hoping he would give me a call back. I don't know if you got that message?
From a, from the.
Emily or something? I called the switchboard on September sixth and told them that I had damage.
No, I didn't, no, this month, this, no, I have not.
On September sixth, which was just days after our meeting, I called down here, left a message with Emily at the switchboard that my truck got hit again for the sixth time, and to relay the message to you, hoping you would contact me because I knew there was going to be communication open with the management brassy so that you were to be aware of this. The gentleman's already had damage, and I didn't hear anything.
No, I didn't get a message.
I called down there the Monday after, which is on the eighth, and talked to Andy, and told him I had damage again. I asked him, I says, "Well, what, what do you want to do about this?" He said, "Well, I'll call corporate, give them your name and your phone number." I've never heard anything from them either. And these are the people that are claiming that they try to work with the neighbors and want to be good neighbors. That was four or five weeks ago. I've not got a phone call back from them. So this is a precedence that they keep setting. So I'm hoping that something will be done with the netting or even to shut it down because we shouldn't have to live like this. I, I don't think any of you would be dealing with sixty or hundreds of golf balls a summer.
No, I.
And we're darn lucky nobody's had a really personal injury or got killed over it because we've all had to dodge them just to work out on our property. So I think, I feel it's a matter of time before there's going to be a personal injury, and it might not be anything that can be fixed.
Well, you know, the other two commissioners could certainly speak for themselves. I mean, I, I absolutely understand, or can understand how frustrating this must be to you. But at the same time, it, it's frustrating to us to, to an extent as well because our, our, you know, we're handcuffed as to what we can do and what we can't do. You know, we, it's, it's very limited. We're talking a private piece of property and going, and something coming off that property over our right of way that we're responsible for.
Yes.
And into another private piece of property. It's just, we, there's just only so much that we can do. Now, I'm, we're willing to do whatever within the guise of law that we, that we can to try to, you know, come to some kind of, of, you know, solution here. But I think, I think what we've seen up to this point is a lot of that depends on the golf course itself, what they're willing to do.
Correct. I, I feel they're directly responsible. They should have to provide a safe environment for all us neighbors, and that should be number one on everybody's list, is all our safety. Now, if there's not an ordinance or something to protect us, can't you make one?
The short answer is no.
So we can't, you, you can't make an ordinance to protect us from the golf balls?
Correct. That's why I'm working with them to rearrange the way it's set up and where it's going, what direction it's going in, and the additional screening and the additional monitoring, because, again, I'm trying to work within the boundaries that I have, and they were receptive to my, my phone call, they were receptive to coming here for a meeting, and they brought the people that were able to make decisions, and we had the discussion, and we laid down several possibilities to try to alleviate this for you neighbors. And that's why, were we going to get it done before today? No. But that's why we, that's why it's important to me that they are stopping November first, and that does give us a few months before they reopen to figure out exactly what they're going to do, and then bring it back to the commissioners, report back to what those things are going to be, and attempt to alleviate this issue. But an ordinance that just says the golf balls can't leave the golf course and go into a private person's yard is just not going to be the fix. If it were that simple, we wouldn't be having this come up meeting after meeting. We would just do an ordinance.
So there's going to be ongoing discussions with the, with the brassy, so.
Correct.
Should we come back next month and see where this is going?
You can. I, I, as soon as it's back on the, as soon as I have a definitive, this is the plan, it will be back on this agenda.
Mm-hmm.
To present as to what those conditions are, what those changes are.
Mm-hmm. And how would we know that so we can come back to the meeting and?
Well, we can, the agenda's posted on the website, but we can also have, Kathy has your contact information, I believe, and we can notify anyone who's back on the agenda.
Okay.
But obviously, the goal here is that before they reopen in the spring is to come to an agreement as to what conditions are going to be changed currently to alleviate the golf balls from leaving the brassy, the driving range.
And if you leave your name and your phone number and who you spoke to over there and their number, I will call them, and I will call you back this week as to what, what I was able to find out through them.
You have the number I called, who I talked to about?
Yes, yes, and your phone number.
Okay.
I kind of just wanted to say something about the net. If you could talk to them about raising the net and making the net go further north, I think that would alleviate a lot of the golf balls. We need a higher net because they're going over the net. And like Evelyn said, she has no net in front of her home at all. So it, I think the bottom one is the net. And if they, you could possibly, since you're in charge of the driving range on the county side, maybe until that net is, until they can get a variance maybe from you, have them.
They already have a variance at be at forty feet. The maximum height was twenty-five. They came in and got a variance and to get to forty.
And there was remonstrance against that variance too, by the way. There was a lot of you that didn't want that when it was increased. You fought that one twenty years ago when that happened.
Well, it's not that nice looking out your front window and seeing the net, no. But if it's going to stop the balls, we don't have it, that's our choice.
But they're, what I'm trying to say is they're permitted for the use that they're currently enjoying right now. They're permitted for that within, within the confines of property rights and property use, and so they're.
And I just wanted to point out that the maximum structure height, which includes that net, was originally twenty-five and it's still twenty-five. To get to forty, they had to come get a variance. And in reviewing those minutes, it was clear that the, I'm not necessarily saying you personally, but the neighbors across the street were not in favor of the screening at that time.
That's why that berm was made. If you'll see where that net's at, there's a berm there that the net's put on top of.
Right.
To get, to get up higher.
So, again, so looking at all, we're, we're looking at all the options, again, to alleviate the golf balls leaving. I can't get any more specific because I don't have an agreement yet as to what those things are going to be.
So if they don't agree to raising the net, or they can't raise the net, or you won't give them a variance, then there's no solution with the net? Is that?
I'm not, I'm not concentrating on the net. I'm concentrating, I'm, I'm not specifically telling you about the net. I'm telling you broadly that we've discussed all kinds of options, and now they're talking back, and they're coming back to discuss one of those things they think they can get done, how, what they would need for approvals from us, and when those things would occur.
We cannot make them get a variance. Again, it's back to property rights and what people, if they want a variance to go higher, they're the ones that are going to have to submit for that, and they're the ones that are going to have to bring it before the boards or the BZA or whoever that is to get that taken care of. But that, that variance would need to be enacted by them.
By them?
Yep. Not us. This is not a court of law here. This is, we, we, we take care of, of, of the ordinances and the things that go about with property right usage. And, and right now with, for us to come in and to tell them that they have to shut their driving range down, that's an overstepping of our boundaries and our responsibilities, and, and then they would have legal recourse from that perspective too. So, you know, everybody's trying to, to find the right solution here to make everybody happy, and I think that's what Attorney McClure's first attempt in the first meeting with these folks is, is trying to do, so we can find some resolve here for everybody. But remember too, there are laws and things that we need to abide by, by this board, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to, you know, everybody has a stake in this, and we're trying to ferret it out the best we can. I mean, we, it's, the law's already established. They, those golf balls, if they come across, they come over there and damage your property, there's civil liability there. There's civil liability.
And it is an ongoing problem, so it's not something that is going to stop come next spring. The same thing's going to happen.
I wouldn't argue that. I, I think you.
If they don't, if there's.
But I think as far as your resolve, if, if it doesn't resolve to the, the, the extent that you want, then, then, then you have rights regard, you know, among civil, you know, civil lawsuits and other things to, 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 to take on if you, you needed to. But I don't know whether the law, the federal law, really is in your favor on that. I'm not an attorney, so I wouldn't be able to comment on that. But that's, this board here does not, we, we don't, we don't make those things happen. We don't tell people with their property what they can or can't do. They, they come before us, and then we have to weigh in on it based on the protocols.
Even if it's a public safety hazard, including anybody who travels on that road?
We have, we have, we have golf courses in Valparaiso that, we have two golf courses in Valparaiso that have similar problems. In fact, they're, they're worse. And, but the, the law, the law, you know, the law is the responsibility of the damage of that ball goes to the person striking the ball. That's where the liability lies, from a public safety standpoint or from whatever. And that's a federal law.
So then if we're not at home and nobody can catch the person who's hitting that ball, then what's our recourse? You have to be able to catch that person that's hitting the ball, or the golf course has to be out monitoring the driving range in order to catch that person, or people, or how, whoever, so.
I think that's part of the ongoing discussions that we're having with them. And so, and I think those things.
And that's why I mentioned the monitoring of the driving range. I'm not trying to be couching my language. I, many things were discussed, the net, screening, position, upper level, lower levels, somebody monitoring it, additional signage, additional landscaping. Many things were discussed. Was anything agreed to?
No.
No. Did, were they amenable to continue the discussions? And did, did I have the feeling that we're going to be able to work some things out? Yes. But we have to be able to do that.
But that was the first meeting, and we're starting this process now. We are involved, and we're trying to, again, be the mediator and bring all the sides together so we have a solution that works for everyone. That's what we're trying to do here.
I appreciate you working, and the sooner the better because it has been going on, like I said, for year after year after year, having to deal with this. And I know none of you would like somebody hitting golf balls at your home or at your vehicles parked in your driveway.
This golf course has been there for over twenty-five years though.
And we've been there longer than that.
Well, I, all's I can say is there's been a longstanding precedence of that golf course being there as well too. And that's where the yin and the yang of all this is. And that's, you know, that's, that's about.
Usually the first person there is, that's more important than the second person comes in, I would think. The home.
I don't think there's a law that, I don't think there's a law that states that or anything. Not, not that I'm aware of, but maybe there is, but.
We are going to continue to work.
We are going to work with them though.
I appreciate that.
You're right.
Nobody wants golf balls coming. I appreciate it because I know none of you would like to be living in that situation and have your homes or your vehicles.
Well, you're right, and we don't like the idea that you are having to live in that situation. But let us see what we can do.
Thank you.
Within our, our authorities.
but let us see what we can do within our, our authorities, so, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else wishing to address this, or you got something else to say?
Yeah, I want to say something because there was a comment made that the neighbors weren't for this net. And I want to dispute that because I was here during that meeting for the variance on the net, where they wanted it to go from 25 to 40 feet.
So I was just reading what was in the report when the variance came forward. There were people, I don't know who the people were, but they were there remonstrating against the net going from 25 feet to 40 feet.
Well, I don't know who that was because I was here.
Well, I, I'm not saying you were. I was saying people were.
We can give you a copy of the minutes. That's what we were reading it from. We weren't there either.
And, once they assured us that the 40 feet was going to take care of the problem, we were pretty much for it. And in that variance, they were supposed, we had other concerns with the net and the poles during the winter. And in that variance, they agreed to take the net down every year. If you read in those minutes, they agreed to that. They've not done it since. Not one winter did they ever take the net down. And when I approached Joey Law about that years ago, because we were working with previous commissioners and Joey Law years ago about this same problem with the golf balls, Joey Law said he couldn't do anything about it. The past commissioners and past board members had signed that agreement, and he couldn't enforce it about the bringing of the net down. So I brought it up because, obviously, they weren't going to do anything with the golf ball problem. I said, "Well, then they should go with a variance. They should have to take the net down." That's what they agreed to. And I brought it up to Joey Law, and nothing ever happened there either about that.
Well, like I said, we're continuing working on it.
Okay.
And we're trying to bring a resolution to this that, that makes everybody happy. But it appears that there's been a longstanding grind out there with what's been going on. But, you know, we're going to try to see if we can get neighbors together and see if we can come up with a solution. We are not the police. And we, we're just going to try to hope that everybody can come up with a, a, something that will make everybody sort of happy, and that's what we're trying to do.
Mm-hmm. I just want to set the record that this isn't a, something that just got started at this last commissioner meeting when we all started coming here because years ago, I was talking to other commissioners and Joey Law about this very problem. So this isn't something that's just come up in the last month.
But again, sir, you're not really understanding what they were zoned for, what they were, you know, what they were approved for all this. And I think when someone from county government says, "Well, there's nothing that they can do about it," I think that's what they're really intimating. I think you're parsing words a little bit. But what they're basically saying is that they don't, code enforcement, nobody within the county has the right to go out there and close somebody down for doing something that you think is wrong. It just doesn't work that way.
I understand that, but you made a statement that they'd been there for 25 years. Well, it's more like 20, and there's a longstanding...
Alls I was trying to say, sir, was that the golf course has been in the community for over 20 years. That's all I was trying to say. That's all I was trying to say. So I, they, they have been, have they not?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I was trying to say.
Okay, well, I didn't want to...
Were you trying to re-enter it, or...
I didn't want to, I thought you were implying that since they've been there that, you know, this is just the way it is, and...
That's why we have Mr. McClure talking about, we want a solution.
Yeah, well, I just want to make it clear, this isn't something...
If we really caught that, you wouldn't even be meeting with them. I mean, that's not, that's, that's not what we're trying to do here.
Well, like I said, this isn't something that we just are just now stirring up a hornet's nest because we talked to other people years ago about it too. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have a bad memory, so, um, I've been thinking, and, no, I kind of forgot. But, yes, you said that the golf course has been there for like 20 years. They've been there a little over 20 years. Our houses, like I said once before, I have the newest house, and I've been there 40 years. The golf course knew this was, we were there before. The neighbors are us. We have, I have nobody living in the house on the north of me. I have nobody on the, in the house living on the south of me. So these are the neighbors, just us. One other person who's going through cancer treatment, so I doubt if he comes. And this has been going on, it's very emotional for us because this has been going on from day one. We're not allowed to use our yards because, because of this problem. So you're saying that they're going to keep shut down until they're going to have, um, uh, something resolved when they open up?
That's fine.
Okay, um, you know, they don't keep track of who is out there, so how are we supposed to know unless they email us the daily itinerary of everybody that's out there? How are we supposed to get back to these people that maybe hit a slice of ball and hit my window? Um, I've had an enormous amount of damage, and I shouldn't have any because if this was a shooting range and said, "Hey, we want to put up a shooting range," you guys would have a, you would have rules. And this is, this can kill people, and there's no rules for it. I just can't believe it because we fought and fought to get the net up. There was nobody else other than the neighbors fighting. And the person that was against the net lived, lives closer to the driving range where they tee off, and it doesn't affect him. So, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, I had just a couple of questions about...
Please state your name and address.
Oh, is that required?
Yep.
Oh, other people didn't do it.
Well, they were all just sort of coming at us blindly there, so...
Pam Tinscher, 4908 Waters Edge Drive, Alpo. Um, I had a couple of questions. One is, how does it work if another group wants to offer prayer since you gave a blanket approval to that group for the whole year? If there's another group, let's say a Muslim group or the Satanic temple wants to also offer prayer because evidently you feel that's important, how would that work?
They apply, and they get on the agenda, and they get approved?
Even though there's already someone there with, because that's not what you implied today, if, if...
Well, there's a difference between two or three people on the courthouse grounds and a table trying to do court-side ministries or prayer or an, or an entire two to seven fall, fall, season, fall harvest festival. It's just like there's a difference between if court-side ministries are and the popcorn fest is going on on the courthouse grounds. Each, each request is different. Each use is different. Just because court-side ministries happens to be there on a Tuesday offering prayer doesn't mean the atheist group can't be there for their cause. It doesn't mean Muslims can't be there for their cause. However, if they show up and they request the entire courthouse grounds to do a demonstration, then yes, that would potentially not allow us to approve someone else to be there. So each request stands alone, and each request has its own issue as far as what is being requested of us. Could I layer on additional things on top of the popcorn fest? No, the entire courthouse grounds is normally used.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the prayer group.
Right.
So it sounds like...
But you're taking what I said earlier as far as what the request is to mean that it's exclusive, depends on what the request is.
Okay. So it sounds like if a Muslim group wanted to offer prayer at the same time, the same location, that would be probably approved?
Correct.
Thank you. I'd also like to go on the record and say that lawsuits to, lawsuits that are designed to defend religion or defend a, a specific belief and using my county dollars are not what I would really want to happen, and I think that it's a waste of taxpayer money. I just wanted to put that out there. And also, one final thing is, you had said previously that there will be no crush on the courthouse lawn this year?
I said nativity scene.
You said no nativity scene?
Correct.
And does that also include the live nativity?
To my knowledge, it does.
I think that's what there won't be, a live nativity.
Right. That was the letter we got a week or so ago or two weeks ago when we got the letter?
What, the, the letter?
Saying that there will not be a live nativity this year.
Oh, okay.
That was the letter that we got a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. All right, yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? And with that, this board stands in recess.